Yes, please bow your hands and join me for a word of prayer. Father in heaven, I thank you for this day. I thank you for your faithfulness and your mercy. And I come to you with gratitude for a new year, for new leadership and new promises. I pray for your blessings over our nation as well as our new president Donald J. Trump. Lord, give him wisdom and godly discernment. Protect him and his family and his cabinet. I pray for sovereignty to be restored to America. And Lord, let no plan of the enemy prosper over us. Give the people of our nation the desire to unify and Lord, give us peace. We love you, Lord, and ask for your goodness and your grace to follow us into the year. Tonight be with each of us in making important decisions for our county and lead us to abide in your will. I ask all this in your son Jesus' name. Amen. Please stand and join me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight Chairman Barbie's gonna be on the phone with us. He's a little bit under the weather so he don't want to bring any germs out. So we hope he's getting feeling better soon. So we got a couple of folks signed up for public comments tonight. We'll start with, uh... We need to do the approval of the agenda. Did anybody get any man or other way? Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the agenda as a... All in favor? Motion passes. So now we'll move on to public speakers. Y'all just burying women is my first night doing this, so we're gonna stumble through this one. So we got Renee Barra. Barra, sign up to speak.
Just step right to the podium, this one. I know we only have three minutes and I will probably have something to say. So, um, I'm here tonight and I will be emotional, I'm sorry, but I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Gateway of Hope. I'm speaking on behalf of the fact that I've been on the board for three years and I'm the mom of a former addict. My son was in addiction for eighteen years. And so I am on that board to be able to have the heart of a mom and be able to speak from that place. I know how it feels to be able, to not be able to sleep at night for night after night whether where your child is. I know how it feels to not go to crack addict's door and search for my child. But also know how it feels to have him locked up. And have the relief that at least he's not at that source anymore or in the streets anymore. Then after that, what do we do? There was nothing here to help you. There was nothing. God provided a place for us to send our son in Monroe called Ground Forty. And I am eternally grateful for that ministry. But it's only we who have something in place to be able to help us as parents to know what this is. So I am here to promote them and to whatever changes are gonna be made there, we need to keep this place going. We need to. When my son was at Ground Forty Ministry, God started speaking to my heart that I needed to reach out to other moms that need to help. We need a place to be able to say how we feel, a safe place to be able to share our stories. So for five and a half years now, I have had in my home monthly meetings for moms of addicts. Anybody that wants to come is welcome, but it's a place where we share how we feel, what we've gone through that month with our child. Victories, failures, we've had some loss, but God has brought us through. When we get together, we pray for our kids is the number one thing we do because we know that's the answer. But we also have to have help. And so when I look and I see these men back here, they come to my church every Sunday, walk in every Sunday. It brings back lots of memories when my son was in recovery, going in the churches that he went with, with Ground Forty. And how that's the beginning of healing, this brings such comfort to my heart every Sunday when I see them because they're persevering and they are working toward an end goal, which is to stay clean. Be able to go back to their families and to their homes again. I want to see this place today and I want to see it flourish and prosper because this county needs it. We shouldn't have to go out of the county for help. I'm thankful that Ground Forty was there for us, but we need a place here in place that our surrounding counties can come to us if they need help. If you've never been out there, I urge you go and see what's happening because I can promise you, and I'm not a Debbie Downer, but I can promise you if you've not been touched by addiction yet in your family, you will. And you will maybe want this place or need this place one day. Whatever it takes is how we pray in a mom's group, whatever it takes to bring our kids back. So whatever it takes to keep this thing, this place going, this ministry going, I urge you to get on board, to stay on board with us.
Thank you for that powerful testimony. Appreciate that and I agree with you 100%. Next up, we have Terry Hopgood.
First off, I want to say great job for having me here. It's a bit of a blessing being a part of Gateway and the new direction you're going with CRCI. My heart is not hurt because I have children too and I'm also an addict and alcoholic. So I know how important it is to have these resources in the community. I've seen both sides of the road and I choose God in recovery. And that means saying good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Terry Hopgood and I have been a resident of Gateway of Hope for seven months. My former life was dominated for many years by drugs and alcohol use. Hopeless and desperate, I turned my life over to God after being arrested and sitting in a jail cell. My perspective instantly changed in Gateway. I've learned how to stay sober and how much God loves all of us. God has been restoring me eternally and more than externally and today Jesus is my anchor. Today I'm sober and have had important relationships restored and unhealthy ones set aside. Due to the wrong, due to my wrong priorities, I had not pursued a driver's license for a long time. But in November, I received my driver's license for after twenty-nine years. I'm not afraid. But I am more excited about the spiritual life and I am worth that I'm walking. I have a new life. I have learned to use the steps of AA in combination with God's truth. Now I'm focused on helping others to find sobriety through AA and their freedom in Jesus. I believe that will be my focus for the rest of my day. The future of Gateway as CRCI is an exciting one. By bringing science and faith together, CRCI's model will transform our community. It will grow quickly. It will multiply many times over in Stanley County in such an amazing way that will be hard to imagine. In closing, I would like to speak on behalf of all residents at Gateway, past, present, and future, as you do. We are all so thankful for your support. Your support has made our stories possible. My story is true for every resident here today. Details are different, but what matters the most is they're the same. Sobriety, life, restoration, and freedom. Oh yeah, I got to vote the first time in my life this year. Thank you for your time and your just support. Love you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep up the good job. Proud of you. Alright, so next on the agenda, we got Christian Recovery Center Incorporated. Presenters Wayne Sasser and Paul Wilkins. Welcome, gentlemen. Look forward to hearing from you.
Mr. Chairman, like I said, Commissioners, and I'll be briefer than last time. Just wanna thank y'all for allowing CRCI to be here and I support their efforts and what they've accomplished in the last three years. They were a little fifteen-bed treatment facility out in the middle of a cornfield. And in three years, we were able, we got them a million dollars from the legislators, part of the Oakbournes settlement money. And they've turned that into a hundred and sixty-bed facilities down in Brunswick County. So they're just super people, do a great job, and I support them 100%.
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chairman, Commissioners, uh, the only place I can begin is saying thank you. Without your support, Gateway just would not be in a position today that it is to even offer this, well, we are calling an amazing gift to Stanley County. And I know that sitting up there, you may not see the amazingness of the gift yet, but I'm saying it with great confidence because I know that one day you will. And I want you to know that for the past many years of your support of Gateway of Hope, that your legacy will live on beyond your national days. And that your kids will say, my dad helped support that organization. It was just a wee little thing. So I just want to say thank you because, like Terry said, it's immeasurable to measure the difference that it will make, not on just the past eight years or so, but on the many to come. I wanted to invite Josh Torbich up. He's actually the one who's going to give a presentation tonight. I just wanted to let you know that my wife and I went to a meeting in October and we heard Josh's team give a presentation and two weeks later, we were on the phone. And two weeks later, we were sitting in his office and we were talking about acquisition. We're not in a position of financial instability. We're not in a position of hurting. But we are in a position, Gateway today is in a position of maintaining. And maintaining isn't enough for me. Maintaining isn't enough for our board. Maintaining isn't enough for Stanley County. We need to grow. We need to grow quickly. Ten years not from now, we could be where we're talking about and where we will be in one. And I'm not willing to do that in ten. So our board voted today, but we're gonna walk through this process of acquisition. And our board will step aside. And CRCI will have a board that is made up of Stanley County members as an advisory board to their executive board. And it is not just a token. It is a valued part of their program. I'll set it up. Thank you.
Hey, Commissioners, good evening to all of you. Chairman, thanks for having me. I'm Josh Torbich. I'm the CEO of Christian Recovery Centers. I appreciate Paul sharing that with you. It's difficult for them to even consider reaching out to a group like ours. I have very close connections to the area, but I'm not from here. I'm in Brunswick County, North Carolina. And tonight, the presentation that I have for you that I'll hustle through quickly, you'll get to hear about some of the meaningful services we've been able to structure there, which I suspect is the main goal that we would have for the future here inside of Stanley County. Just a little bit about me, one of my main connection points to this area. Anybody ever heard of a place called Bridge to Recovery before? That fellow, that miserable looking fellow up there on the left is me after an overdose behind the wheel of my truck in 2012, at which point, do you have my screen?
Let me try. That might have done it.
So if we go, put in laptop.
Should be on counsel.
And went head on into an eighteen wheeler.
Yeah, there you go.
And the new version of me on the right is with my beautiful wife and my two kids today. But it all started with me at the Oakborough House. They didn't have a treatment program back then, but I was at the Oakborough Safe House. Actually, there's a ministry here tonight represented called Safer Communities. Mr. Bear Oliver runs that ministry. He was the first person to minister to me whenever I was getting sober in 2013. So I just thought that was a cool gift. Some of my responsibilities today, I'm a very proud member of the Bridge to One Hundred. I'm actually one of the charter members. This is a group founded by Congressman Hayes, who's in the audience tonight with us, and Representative Sasser. And they both have created this network of faith-based organizations across the state. And I'm very happy to participate in that. You already know that I'm the CEO of Christian Recovery Centers, but I also get to serve as the Board Chair for Brunswick County Substance Use and Disorder and Mental Health Commission. As a mouthful, don't say it too quickly. That is essentially a group that our county put together to help steward the gift of the Oakbournes settlement funds. And I've been happily serving on that for now six years. I'm also a part of the Advisory Committee for the Prevention Efforts inside of all of our Brunswick County schools. Just to give you an idea of how integrated I am into our communities. Rep. Sasser told you a little bit about our residential locations. I call him one of the favorite places we give a gift to because not many people are able to create what we created with just a million bucks. I used to think in my head this, man, if someone would just give us a million dollars, all our problems would be solved. And it created more problems than I ever knew what to deal with. But this is some shots of a few of our locations there inside of Brunswick County. The one on the bottom right is the one that we contributed the gift from the North Carolina legislator to. That is a hundred and two residential beds for males in the middle of Shiloh, North Carolina. I do want to share with you something that I think is really relevant for you. Out of each location, and I went to this organization after I got sober in Oakborough. I went down here for a recovery program. It was more like a group home. And then I never left. I still never got my graduation certificate. I just kind of grew and continued to be a part of the program while the organization's makeup transformed. In 2015, I became the CEO. I went through each special use permit process. Some of them needed to be rezoned for all of these facilities that we structured. Not one of them had a community member who showed up to speak out against it. I spent weeks for each project that we did, sitting on each one of the neighbors' couch to make sure that they didn't have this fear of the unknown, so that they knew who we were, so that they understand what we were doing. They have our every neighbor at all these sites. And just for full disclosure, the site at the bottom right with the hundred and two beds has a two-hundred-plus daycare. That's about two-hundred feet from the driveway. And y'all know about some crazy mamas who could have showed up. They chose not to. And I believe that speaks to our relationship with the folks here. I do want to give you a sightline to our program. We have a structure that breaks down into three components. The first one's a treatment, fully robust treatment program for clinical services. In the middle, we have recovery services and on the back end, we have reentry. Altogether, we serve people for up to two years of care. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that model here. Inside of the treatment program where they first come to start, they're going through an entirely clinical process and working with a psychiatric nurse practitioner and licensed therapist. We do offer a titration program or medication-assisted treatment at the beginning stages. Philosophically, we believe that medication-assisted treatment is in its best form to offer people the opportunity to exit a lifestyle of addiction into a lifestyle of recovery. So you can see that in the first part of our program in that treatment adaptation, they're given the opportunity to maneuver through that first clinical services program before they enter into recovery. And then, of course, on the back end, you can see some of the services that are continuing to be offered in the reentry portion of this. So someone could literally, with the social setting detox capabilities, capture themselves at their very, let's just say their most area of need, where they're most in need of services. And we could literally propel them for up to two years of care back into a productive member of society. I'll tell you a story about Caleb real quick. Can I ask him if I could share? Caleb graduated our program three weeks ago. He has two plumbing trucks that he left with and three of our other Phase Four residents working for his new LLC that he started eight months ago. He did that in rehab and he is not an uncommon case. We're watching our folks rebuild their lives based off of not services that we just offer to them freely, but services that they work hard to maintain. And another important note, the treatment and recovery services are all structured at no cost to the individual and doesn't require any insurance for any of them to... We're very proud of the fact that we never charge the fee for any of our services. Once they get to the reentry program, they do have a weekly phase fee that they pay for that reentry part. I know this looks like a lot of fun to me, but maybe not to y'all. But I do want to tell you a couple of things about it and I'd be happy to share this slide deck with you. It doesn't fit all the way on this image, so you're missing all the information to the left. But this is a chart that we're using with the North Carolina Collaboratory for a project that we're doing with UNC Chapel Hill. And it really describes the components of how our faith and science model works for people who are traveling through our program. And you can see that both versions of this have different components from both the faith side, and that's what the top version is, the faith side, and the science side on the bottom, that all affect the participants' journey while they're going through this. Why is something like this important to share with you guys on our first meeting? Because most programs, and I'm a guy who's been to programs, have a very specific way that's very narrowly focused on how to achieve what they would consider a meaningful life, or let's just say overall well-being. Rebuilding someone's life is anything but a narrowly focused process. You can hear things like our friend came up and shared about just getting his license back or just getting to the first time that he was able to vote. Those sound like really cool stories and very meaningful things he was able to participate in, but those things also might not be important to somebody else. They might have different priorities. So CRCI embarked on a model that can help individualize a person's care plan while they go through this process so that we can hit some of the higher hanging goals for their life while they still feel like connections are being made in a meaningful way on progress on the things that they believe are important. I like my chart. I'm gonna share it with you directly so you can see the entire thing. I'm not sure why it's cut off. Just a, if you visited our website, you would be able to see a tab on there that's called Financial Transparency. And you can access easily our non-nineties, our annual audits and different things like this. I did want to pull this from our 2024. This is unaudited financial numbers. Our audit will be done in May or April. We are on a calendar year. But seventy-seven cents of every dollar that we generated in 2024 went directly into our program services. Anything over seventy cents, I'm sure you guys know, is considered a great benchmark for a nonprofit organization. So I've heard Pat and Mick's Fish Camp a million times since I've been here. Anybody know about that place? Okay, so everybody knows about Pat and Mick's Fish Camp. And I actually got to meet Pat and Mick's two daughters, right? Okay, I got to, they came to a little community meeting that we had and I got to hear about their waitressing dance. They are, they were such a joy to be around and to listen to a little bit of the history of that property. I didn't understand how much history there was around the property, but I'm sure you guys all know the site that we're talking about. Gateway of Hope reached out to us and made this connection. And we met with some of the community members and we said, what are your dreams? You know, what can we do? And they saw, many of them made the trip down to see our campuses there in Brunswick, which I would invite all of you to do. It's not a bad place to visit. There's a beach, a few beaches. All of them, a few of the community members here tonight made the trip down to visit us and they said, copy and paste. They said, please take what you've been able to create here. They met our people. They walked and met our staff. They went through and visited all of our, they looked in our residence rooms and talked to some of them. They met people at every level of service and they said, please, come and copy and paste this thing here. They saw something that they genuinely appreciated, which I expect if you guys laid eyes on it, you would too. It's an ambitious goal, but currently it has the capacity out there to serve about fourteen folks. The initial services, what we believe Stanley County would benefit from the most initially in the year 2025 would be that clinical treatment program on the front end. And this does allow us, just to consider this, if we structure the clinical treatment services this year, it does allow us to accept people pretty much immediately whenever they're ready for help. But it's an important note to make, they'll have access to all two years of care involved with our agency. I asked my Chief Operating Officer before I walked in here, we're currently serving out the hundred and sixty beds. We have twelve Stanley County residents. They're down at the beach. It's not even warmer, but they're at the beach. So you should already know that we are serving your people, you know, we are working with your communities here. And 2027, the site at one of its first benchmarks to help achieve what I believe would be a good goal for some of the potential early on would be a hundred-plus beds offering what we have available inside of the community in Brunswick right here on site inside of the Gateway of Hope current location. If you guys are interested in any of these slides or if I could work with your staff to get these navigated over to you, I'd love to do that because I know there was a lot of information on there. But also if you have any questions that you're interested in, I'd be happy to share also, you know, any of the program overviews that we have. If you guys want like the backend details of how our program works, sometimes it's dry reading, but some people are interested in stuff like that. You can locate all of those documents on our website and that's at CRCirecovery.org. What questions can I answer for?
I have one.
How old was I? So let's see, I'm thirty-four now, so I was twenty-three whenever I got sober.
Do you have high school age residents?
High school, oh yes. Yeah, inside of our program?
Yes.
Yes, of course, yes. Actually, can I share something with you real quick? Oh, is it okay if I stand in here? Hey, we work inside of the school system. So when I say I mean it, we actually instruct in Brunswick County schools for every middle and high school. We teach the drug and alcohol portion of every health and PE class. So what that looks like is I bring our eighteen, nineteen-year-old residents. Now, these are some residents who just finished, you know, smoking crack, being on the sick though like three months ago that we're coaching up to bring inside of these school systems to speak to students that are just recently, they were sharing those lectures with us. Impact inside of the school system. I've been, the school board and the superintendent invited me to do that seven years ago. And I've been doing it since then with our younger population, eighteen, nineteen-year-olds, sometimes twenties. We've had children get off the lectures and hand us their baked foods before they walk out of that gymnasium. I mean, you want to talk about something, really. I'm an old man when they look at me and hear me speak. But when those guys and girls I bring out there get up there and they start to listen, they... Yeah, but thank you for the, we serve eighteen and older. And we have accepted, oh, don't mention companies. We've accepted a seventeen-year-old before with a parent's labor who was going to turn eighteen within the next couple of months. What's that? Yeah, so a hundred and two beds for males and the rest are structured for female services.
You guys have a good debate currently?
We stay really full, very, very full. I should tell you this though, with the new site that we're working on here, the way that we structure it is right now our service area Brunswick, Columbus, New Hanover, and Pender. And then with the new service location for Gateway of Hope, Stanley County will take priority entry and take care of our program services. So we don't have enough room to create a full version of what the ecosystem is here by here. But that doesn't mean we won't have priority access to our, we won't handle transportation and all that stuff, but we'll get them into the program. transportation and all that stuff, but we'll get them into the program, but at least they'll have their start in place. So what I'm saying is they'll get to bypass that waiting list, you know, when we do have one. There's usually about fifty or sixty folks waiting to come.
Do you, do you do, do all of your residents first go to a detox, like a seven to ten day?
That's a really good question. So we have psychiatric nurse practitioner and oftentimes we can get them through with just the medication assisted treatment process, but a lot of times without alcoholism, they're a little bit outside of that social setting, detox capability, so we do need to send them to some type of overnight, more hospitalized clinical supervision for a few days. But after that, they're released. So we're probably about fifty-fifty with what our capabilities look like. It, it depends on what kind of guy or strengths they're in. Those decisions are made at any rate by smarter people than me.
You know, Paul, helping us, and doing a great job. I had to start, yeah. People call me and I see people calling up and say, hey, there's a guy out there. Oh, well, that'd be something that y'all would be interested in.
Yes, I, can I share with you another story? Hold on a second minute. Kathy Litch is our executive director of Health and Human Services in Stanley County. Our county loves us, y'all. Like, I'm not lying, like, they really love us. We're the best organization to work with, you can ask them, it's not just me. Our county commissioners love us. One of them is because my CEO married one of our commissioner's daughters, so they've kind of walked into that relationship. There you go. They, they really love us. And here's, here's how our conversation went with Kathy Litch before I walked in the building. We have a service that's called a warming, so any time the temperature drops below forty degrees, our doors open to the general public. We have a cots that we put inside of our chapels, inside of our facilities. Just like cold service type shelter. I know it sounded like a weird name, but I worked with our fire marshal to make sure I was calling it the right thing so nobody got in trouble, amen. Okay. So he said, you can do it if you call it this. And I said, we're going to call it that. Andrew said, good, okay. So any time the temperature goes below forty degrees, we open the warming shelter. Over half of those people that we've served, and it's been about six years or so since the winter stroke, have now navigated into long-term situations for their care. You guys know the homeless population is over ninety percent drug and alcohol addicted. So it's, it's so much to tell you, you know, that we won't get. The most important thing that I really wanted you guys to capture tonight is that we're really good partners and we really, really help people. We're not perfect, because I'm there, but we really, really help people and we're great folks to work with. So if there's one thing that I would ask you to leave with tonight is believing that we were the right people to help achieve the dreams that they have inside of their community. And I really do believe that, y'all. We also got some good wind behind ourselves. You know, there's nothing like some good momentum, you know, type of thing. So God's really been blessing us and I'm really encouraged. I have a team of eighty employees back home who are super encouraged about it, so there's, there's also that. You know, we've got all the right folks to, you know, Representative Sasser and Representative Page, they're both really conscious and helping us get where we are. Anything else?
Mr. Hopgood, you don't have to come. Your influence and example is, is great. I don't want to tell you that. I mean, I know you sing the blessings and Ms. Para, you can. I just want to, I want to jump up and down right now and just.
Yeah, me too.
Ms. Para, I was good friends with your husband and I know how much, and I knew your son. And you, we don't see young people in high school. I've had students not off in class and they don't have help, they live in their cars, they come to school with the same clothes on every day and then they get put in jail and then they make the wrong people. But I just praise God that you guys are here and I, I just, I wish I had enough money I could just give you everything I had because what you're doing is working. And I know at one time, it couldn't be faith-based, you had to have a prescription in order to get money. And thank you for what y'all are doing.
Me, all of you.
Good to be here.
Good to be here.
One of the individuals that went to Brunswick County and visited CRCI was John Henry Call. And on our way back, he said, man, I will do anything you need me to do. And I said, would you be willing to speak to a couple of boards? So he was, he was kind enough to come tonight and have something prepared, but he walked past the assignment table. Is there, is this an opportunity that he can say to share?
Good evening.
Evening.
It's a blessing to be here to speak to y'all tonight. I would, I have to admit, I was a bit of a skit before I went down to visit with the Christian Recovery Center, because I've been in recovery myself, in and out since I was fifteen years old. I've been down the same road those guys have been down. I've used for fifteen years and been clean and sober almost ten and a half in May, so. And, and I never really did the faith-based programs. I always did the twelve-step programs, local programs and, but I'm a Christian and I, you know, I go to church on Sundays and I'll kind of blend the two together. And I never really did the faith-based programs. So when I went down there, I wanted to make sure that they had a twelve-step recovery program involved, you know, and, and I saw that they have a very, very good blend of what they like to call science and faith. And I was, I was sold on it pretty, pretty quick. I really liked their facility. You know, Josh is great, he's great with the guys. I mean, all the, all the guys down there just love him and they've got a really nice facility. I can't say enough good about the, the program and I'm really glad to be involved in and really look forward to seeing where this goes. And I just, I know it's going to be a great thing for the community. And so, and it's just, I'm glad I was able to come to my chair and talk a bit about faith.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? I'm going to thank y'all so much for coming out tonight and Representative Sasser, Lou Page, thank you so much for all y'all done and we couldn't be here without you guys. So thank y'all so much for everything and we look forward to you guys being here in Stanley County and moving the needle and keep on, keep on doing what you're doing. Thank you so much. Next up, we've got the planning board appointments. I think Bailey's going to come up here and present.
Mr. Chairman, by chair members of the board, thank you for having me. I have one item for you tonight. This is the appointment of four members to the planning board. The Stanley County Planning Board consists of seven members that are appointed by the commissioners in staggered three-year terms. The terms for John Egman, Kevin Breckman, and Joe Malden will all expire in February of 2025 this year. Michael Williams was appointed to the board of adjustment, but his term on the planning board does not end until February of 2027. Someone will need to be appointed to serve out the rest of his term. Kevin Breckman has expressed his interest in remaining on the planning board. This would be Mr. Breckman's second term. He has been consistent in both attendance and participation in discussion during meetings. Joe Malden and Jay Egman have both indicated that they would not be seen in reappointments. Applications received at this point are from Donald Atkins, Patricia Blaney, Kevin Breckman, William Golehon, Kelly Hart, Shawanah Long, Kevin May Jr., and Terry Page. All other applications, all, all their applications are included in your packets along with their information. The current members that are serving their last planning board meeting is February 10th meeting. Please appoint four members to the planning board, three terms expiring in February 28th and one term expiring in February of '27.
Thank you, Bailey. We appreciate you coming out. At this time, I'll take a motion from the board. We can do it all in one, if you want to, we'll do that. So I'll take motions.
Mr. Chair? I'd like to make a motion that we nominate Patricia Blaney, Kelly Hart, and William Golehon for the, the longer terms that last until, what was that date again?
February 28th.
For February 28th? And then I would like to also move that Terry Page has the term until February of 27.
I've got a motion. Go ahead and say it.
Patricia Blaney, Kelly Hart, William Golehon, and Terry Page.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the last two, Chairman Barbie, is Osprey and all two, so you have Patricia Blaney, Kelly Hart, William Golehon for the February of 2028, and then Terry Page will finish out the February of 2027. I've got a motion and a second on that.
Thank you.
Do we have any discussion? If you hear no discussion, I'll take both. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passed at seven oh. All right. Anything to find? So next up, we've got Senator Andy Lucas for the resolution opposing down zoning provisions for Senate Bill 382.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. In your packet, you have at board's request here in January, I guess it would have been your January third meeting, for a resolution regarding Senate Bill 382, the downzoning provisions of that. This is a resolution that seeks to have our legislative delegation work to expeditiously repeal the provisions of the downzoning within that Senate bill. And so the resolution's before you for your consideration. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Can I make a motion? Will it prove? A motion, Mr. Golehon? Second by Commissioner Hadley. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed at seven oh. Next up, we have Bridge Recovery presenter Andy Lucas.
Yes, thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. The Bridge Recovery are seeking a supplemental increase to their fiscal year 24, 25 OPL7 funding. They initially received an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars effective July 1st of 2024 for the fiscal year, but subsequently they have scholarships, more folks than they anticipated and are now, after the accounts payable clears this Friday, they'll essentially be out of the, out of any more money this fiscal year, scholarship anyone. So they're, they've sought an additional thirty-five thousand dollars that would be, would take them through June 30th of 2025, the rest of this fiscal year. They will apply through the application process again when we open it up here in February and March and it will be reconsidered for a new appropriation for next fiscal year. This thirty-five thousand will take them through the remainder of this fiscal year. Then it'll be up to you all to decide if they get any additional funding beyond that in fiscal year 25, 26. So I'll be happy to answer any questions. They did provide some supplemental information in here as part of their request and I do know that Mr. Crump asked some questions and I followed up with her and shared that information that Lou shared, with Davis shared, with all the other members of the board, so you all would be on the same page with what they were, some of the responses he provided for Mr. Crump. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
I don't have any questions, but I think for transparency, I'd like to share a little bit of what he has offered. I think it's good for the public to know. I, I know he's doing really good things there. Bridge Recovery offers a thirty-day program, but few individuals stay exactly thirty days. Of the seventeen graduates, six stayed thirty days, eight stayed twenty-one to thirty days, and three stayed longer than thirty days. And of these seventeen individuals, twelve went to sober living and five returned home to their families. Bridge Recovery, Bridge Recovery only invoices Stanley County for individuals who graduate the program. They never invoice for non-grads who were dismissed or chose to leave and the invoice reflects a daily charge of a hundred and five dollars times the number of days in treatment. And I just think that's important to share. Some people graduate early for the following reasons: transportation issues and/or employment requirements, sober living opportunities, like smooth transition to long-term placement, and then also disability issues, cognitive, behavioral, or medical. Financial aid criteria is based on the individual situation. If the family is able and willing to pay the admission fee, Stanley County does not receive an invoice. The criteria is based on a conversation with the family and financial hardship is assessed prior to admission. Bridge Recovery never makes length of stay decisions based on funding. Admission or early graduations are based only on logistical and clinical factors and no one is turned away or dismissed due to funding constraints. Thank you.
And from a financial perspective, we have a good fund balance in this fund that we've been able to improve over the last few years as these funds have come in. You all have appropriated and just made as much money as we received, so, which is good because it'll carry us beyond the number of years that this funding, or hopefully carry us beyond the number of years this funding lasts. So, but so this thirty-five thousand dollar request, you can, you can satisfy that request with what's available on fund balance, very easily.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Please, please.
Mr. Vice Chairman, I have Metro Ocean that we approved up to a settlement funding in the amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. Bridge Recovery through June 30th, 2025.
Have a motion? Got a second? All right, just, we'll take a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passed at seven zero. All right, this time, I think you've all had time to look over your agenda and consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda or just a motion? Mr. Vice Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve any consent agenda as we do. Got a motion? Eber? Second by Commissioner Crump? Any questions? Tell me. All in favor? Motion passed at seven zero. At this point, we'll move on to board comments. Start at the end.
Mr. Mills?
I know there's not, not everyone watches our meeting online, but maybe word will get out. Several people have asked about the increase in taxes and property tax. And that's something that every four years, the property has to be evaluated, reevaluated. One thing that I would ask, if you, if you want to, go in to Stanley County Maps and go to the webpage, GIS, and print off your property card, because the new one will be put on before long. And if you go on in and, and pull that up and print it off and save it, then you can use that property card whenever the new evaluations come out and you can compare it to the one you had before. And sometimes you might find something, but you're going to need to be able to document that. So right now, if you're concerned, and you know, we don't have that yet, we don't have, you know, what the revenue neutral is going to be. So if you, if you can, go in and print out your property tax card and you'll be able to see exactly how much it changed or if anything did change. That's all.
Mr. Golehon? Thanks, sir. First, I'd like to say to your wife, happy birthday. And County Manager Lucas, I'd like to tell your wife, happy birthday. But I can't leave here without telling my lovely wife, happy birthday. She puts up with the stuff I do, but most of all, she puts up with the stuff I don't do. So, happy birthday, baby. Love you. Supper's on me tonight.
I just want to say thank you to all that came out to support Gateway of Hope and CRCI. That was a very meaningful conversation and I'm very excited to see what's going to happen in the next year with Gateway of Hope and this new acquisition. So that's, that's all. So that's, that's all.
Mr. Hadley?
Same here. Just thank you, Wayne, for helping on and robbing Mr. Hayes and great work Paul does. It's amazing. If anybody hadn't been out to tour the facility and meet the guys, the guy that spoke, they've all got that same mentality. It's amazing. So thank you.
Chairman Barbie, you still with us?
I am.
Can you comment?
I could be there. Do what?
See, you didn't comment.
I appreciate Vice Chairman King conducting tonight. And hopefully I get rid of this crud and I can be back at it. So thank you, everyone.
Let's get it to them back soon. I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. Representative Sasser, there's a list of things that me and you don't agree on, but this is one of the things that me and you both are a hundred percent on. They do great things. And without you and Paul and Representative Hayes, this wouldn't be possible. So I wanna thank you for everything y'all done. And all, I hope that you'll continue to be a part of this and hope you don't go anywhere because we need your guidance and leadership on this too.
You're stuck with me.
Good. It's a good problem to have. And Tracy, I wish you happy birthday and hope you have many more. So thank you guys for coming out tonight. At this point, I'm gonna seek a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.